You will not be able to stay home, brother.
Moved by Melvin Johnson, seconded by Mr. Orson. Any discussion among us? Mr. Jester?
Suma Gupta, I had a quick legal question. So, we're discussing renaming the school after a sitting congressman. And my understanding is that elected officials cannot receive extra compensation or any gift of more than, you know, a nominal value. And by placing somebody's name on a building, you know, whether it's a, you know, a building or some sort of structure or a billboard, that certainly has a monetary value. What are the federal election or gift laws on this?
There is no monetary value associated with naming a public school building, unlike stadiums, for instance, which auction off naming rights. Public schools don't do that.
But if we did, I bet we could get some money off of it. Point being is that it has value.
There is no legal prohibition against naming a school after a living elected official.
Not specifically, but it doesn't mean that it's not illegal.
No, there's no legal prohibition against it.
No, there's no legal prohibition against naming something, but it has monetary value. And that's where I'm going. So, it's not so much the name, but this is a gift to the sitting congressman.
I don't see how it has monetary value.
Okay.
I don't think there's any legal basis for a public school building having legal monetary value, the naming of it.
Gotcha, okay. Well, thank you for that, uh, legal opinion, Suma Gupta. Appreciate it.
Sure.
The part about, this agenda item, a part about naming this new Brookhaven Elementary Skyland School, um, it in and of itself, you know, breaks every policy, every regulation that we have when it comes to naming schools. You know, Marshall and I have, uh, Mr. Orson and I have discussed this a couple of times. And I've asked him to, ignosium, to include the Brookhaven community. And I would ask him again, as a friendly amendment, to please not rename the Skyland Elementary School in this agenda item.
So, I believe our process was sufficient. I believe members of the Brookhaven community, including the Latin American Association, which is based in Brookhaven, participated in this process. I am more than comfortable with this recommendation. I think it is very appropriate. I think it is for an iconic figure, not just in the Atlanta area, but throughout our nation. And I think anything short of this would be a mistake. I mean, John Lewis has demonstrated his bona fides for well over 50 years. And I think for DeKalb to do something like this is both monumental and appropriate and a great opportunity for us to demonstrate that we respect just a really, a truly great American, and we do so in a time when he can also appreciate our honoring him.
And there's no doubt that, um, John Lewis is a prominent figure. He's, um, no doubt iconic. But I think this is one of those things where we need local control. And DeKalb, I think, is pushing this on the Brookhaven community, which I don't believe they've had much of any input. So, I move that we take off that last sentence where we're pushing this onto Skyland as the last sentence on the requested action and the last sentence on the summary.
I think that calls for a second.
Take a second.
Okay. Mr. McMahon seconds it, so therefore we would have to vote on it, right?
Need a discussion first.
Right, well, moved by, moved by Mr. Jester, seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there any discussion?
So, if I can start off a quick discussion. I just have one question to the board. And I would ask you, do you believe this is the name the Brookhaven community would choose for their elementary school? That's the only question I pose to you.
My mic, okay. I've been trying to get in for the longest. As I said during the work session, what makes the Brookhaven community so different from any other community that they cannot wear John Lewis's name? We need to call the elephant in the room. And the elephant in the room is the fact that a certain area doesn't want someone of a different color to be able to have the name on a school. The school building is the edifice for learning to take place. And we need to stop with our stereotypical views. We can have it on names in the South, but we can't have it on names on the North. I am satisfied with what Mr. Orson has done. He came to me as a board member, as an adult, as a man, as a professional, and I asked him the questions. And if I'm gonna be put into a pot as if I would just put anything and anybody's name on something, I won't wanna be disrespected like that. But we need to begin to look at where our hearts are, our minds are. And the reason for the dissension and divisiveness in this country today is because of people with their racist attitudes and mindsets who are afraid to come and deal with it and accept all people for who they are. 'Cause in the final analysis, we all were born and we're all gonna die. And we cannot keep playing these games. And we wonder why our children are confused and mixed up because of the leaders that we have trying to lead, who don't even like the children that they see, don't respect them, nor do they like and respect their colleagues. And I'm about fed up with it. And that's the only reason why there is a problem with this name, and it has nothing to do with what's really happening and the pretense that's going on. We are here to do a job and not to be going back and forth about whose name and why it isn't. And why don't we just call a spade a spade and stop playing games here?
Any further discussion? Mrs. Turner, followed by Mr. McMahon.
Um, I would just like to, and I don't wanna be redundant. I think Dr. Morley has stated what, what many of my sentiments. And I said to, um, Mr. Jester earlier that when children come to school, first I wanna say, there has to be a willingness to accept the opinion of our legal attorney. And there is no monetary value attached to this. We're not giving him the building. We're just putting his name on the building. And last time I checked, nobody gets any money from your name being on the building, not here in DeKalb County, anyway. Uh, I do believe that part of educating our culture, our children, is that they would have opportunities to be educated about phenomenal leaders. And we all have agreed, for the most part, that this congressman has done some phenomenal things in history that we all are recipients of, in particular, us people of color. I don't, I won't call him a personal friend, but I had an opportunity to award him, and award, he's a very humble man. And I think that it would behoove us to educate our children, this is a man in his eighties who will probably be transitioning in the next 10 years, I'm sure, but for our children to be educated about who he was and the phenomenal differences that he made in our lives so that we can sit up here on even this dais here. I think it would shortchange the community of Brookhaven because they need to come into this century and acknowledge the icon that we're trying to honor by putting his name on the building. And I think, Mr. Jester, we all have to look at ourselves in the mirror and challenge ourselves as to why do we think what we think? And challenge ourselves that we need to grow. It's time for us to grow as a people, as adults, and, and the best place to start is with our children, is to teach them about the historical figures that are in our history that are of color. We have been very good about recognizing others, but not very good about recognizing those that are of color.
Dr. Johnson, just one. Mr. McMahon, Mr. Jester, then Dr. Morley.
Thank you, Chair. So, just to be extremely clear, I think Mr. Jester supports naming a school after Congressman Lewis. I think the issue that has been raised is representation without being, without a voice. The process that Mr. Orson has so willing, taken his time to be a part of, he's been asked to lead an effort in naming a school that is in his board district. The caveat is that the permanent, the name should go to the permanent location, which is not located in Mr. Orson's district. So, from a process standpoint, if you're looking for a permanent solution and you're not including the permanent location, I think that is the context of our discussion. It's not about a black or white issue, in my opinion. As evidenced by the naming of Barack Obama Elementary School, that was a unanimous vote by the board today. I support naming Congressman Lewis Elementary School. I also support the community supporting that. And I appreciate Mr. Orson's advocacy and his time spent with this. But if it was a permanent name for the permanent location, I think the challenge was it was not asked of the permanent community. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay. I'm trying to follow the rules by looking down here. Dr. Morley, I see Dr. Morley, Marshall, and Mrs. Turner. That's what I see right now.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I'm not gonna belabor this, 'cause I've been here long enough. You can't change a person's heart nor their mindset in an evening. A lot of this is the vestiges of what has taken place in this country. I was on a radio show the other week, and I talked about the wars that are going on. We don't have to go outside the United States to find wars, 'cause there are wars right here in America, right here in DeKalb County. Wars of people still not accepting each other and living under the guise of perpetrating frauds and pretending that they're certain people and that they really aren't. When we can be women and men enough to stand up and call a spade a spade and accept our feelings about other people and the reasons why we do things, and, Mr. McMahon, I thank you for your explanation, but that is not the discussion. We raise issues and we find problems when there's something that we don't want to take place. And we use that as a cover-up to deal with the real issues. And the elephant just keeps trampling around the room, and we won't call things what they really are being called. We find something wrong to keep it from coming that way. And as an African American, I am sick and tired of it, 'cause I've lived it all my life. Systematically coming in and finding a reason why certain things shouldn't be certain ways under the guise of everything. We tell our children to get an education, then we slam the door on them. We tell them to get all you can if you're this way, and then they find themselves still at the bottom, economically deprived, nowhere getting anything. Until everybody in this country is free, nobody is free. John Lewis didn't fight for one group of people. He fought for everybody. And this man has never said a racist comment against anybody, even though he was beaten, watered down with water hoses, trampled, called names, bitten by dogs. He still stands till today, even though we have to sit every day and watch our men be killed and slaughtered. He has still never raised a question as to whether we should ever not love each other. Until we can, I'm not gonna ask anybody to not see color, 'cause that's not real. But we need to see human beings and stop playing these games. And as board members, I wanna say that I'm just really ashamed to be around anyone, anywhere, who would play games, not call a spade a spade, and not be realistic about what they don't want and why they don't want something. And I don't believe that Marshall, again, as I said, and we've had our differences, but I can say I believe he vetted this the right way. He did what needed to be done, and this has been going on for weeks. And it comes to this point where we can find every nitpicky thing to do. And I think we need to ask ourselves, if it was somebody else's name, if it was a different persuasion, would we think, feel, and say the same thing? I'll say as the governor of Ohio said, no. If it was a white man driving that car, would we hear, "Been killed"? No. If this was a white man whose name was going on this building, would we disagree? No. And so, we've got to start looking at, it doesn't matter what race. The children don't know that. We need to teach history. And it can't be his story and her story. History, herstory, whatever you wanna call it. And we cannot become like Texas, where we wanna take slavery out of the textbooks and pretend it never happened. But when we have a mindset like this, slavery still exists. Take 'em off the hands and the feet, the shackles, but when we bind people's minds and their hearts, we are still not free. And we need to get to a point where we say, we've got to look at our individual selves and come to grips with it. And I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired of constantly people being shielded because of the fact they don't wanna accept the fact of their shortsightedness, short-mindedness, and their closed hearts to accepting differences. I will go along with the school being named as just a name on a school. My thing is, what's gonna take place in that school? But it gives children pride. This man can compare to many others, and he's still here. And Ms. Turner, he may live to be 90, 100, or something, and that will still be great. But I think the bottom line is, we've got to stop playing these games. We're a board, we're supposed to be leading children. And no matter how many times, years I've taught, all children, and that's why God had people to be born headfirst, so you can know that they were human beings. You didn't know whether male or female. But we're the ones as adults who ascribe racist sexist tendencies on our children. They're not born thinking like that. They don't even see it. They're just friends together. But it's because of us as adults who are supposed to be leading and guiding. This country makes it very difficult. We don't have to go to the Middle East, uh, anywhere else. We just need to look outside our front doors and in our own neighborhoods.
The last two speakers, Mr. Orson, followed by Mrs. Turner.
Uh, thank you. Chairman.
I take that back, three.
Uh-oh. Mr. Orson. So, John Lewis has often said, "We're better than where we were, but we're not quite where we need to be." And I think there's a lot of truth to that statement. I think it's important to recognize that the naming of the school, what he represents. Now, I do wanna address a procedural matter, because I think it's important. I understand the, the good faith in which Mr. McMahon made his statement, but I, in fact, called every board member and had this conversation about the name going with the students to the new school, or it wasn't coming on the agenda, 'cause it was important that this be more than a temporary measure. So, I, I think it's important, I respect, you're a good friend of mine, Jim, but we had this conversation. This was not a surprise to anybody. I had this conversation with everybody, because I understood that this was out of the ordinary of how we often do this. And I think it was important, but quite frankly, in due deference to Congressman Lewis, I just didn't want us to attach his name to a building for three years. We were gonna abandon it. That didn't seem really quite a way to honor him. I do think that we are at a interesting and challenging time in our country, and I think some of what has happened here is a reflection of that. And it is probably the most apropos time to name a school for somebody like John Lewis, who represents our better self, who represents the ideals about the individual, regardless of race. That he is, what his actions and his reputation may have been born in the civil rights movement for African Americans, but what he represents is for everybody in this room, for all those who are outside this room. And, and what was heartening was that the parent participants in this process, all of whom were Hispanic, were the ones who pushed this idea for naming him, because they understood that what John Lewis did resonated with them today, in today's America, with the issues they face. And, and that they saw themselves, and more importantly, their children, as Americans, not as Hispanic Americans, but as Americans, and that John Lewis represented the ideals behind what America stands for. So, given what we have experienced as a country over the last week or so, but obviously going back even further, but particularly in this past week, I can see no better time than bestowing an honor of this sort on an American who has stood for the ideals for which I think everybody in this room believes in.
Thank you, Marshall. Our last two speakers would be Ms. Turner and Dr. Irwin. And then we will vote on the amendment by Mr. Jester.
Um, I'm struggling a little bit, because I find myself being very sad. And it's not just what is happening right here in DeKalb County. It is what has happened in our country, in Minnesota, and the other place, the loss of life. And it's forcing us to deal with things that we don't wanna deal with. You know, um, I can't help but think about, I hear about DeKalb was all this and some extra things in the past. And I can't help but think that buildings were named after people that we didn't get a say-so about at all. We just had to show up and bring our children to school. But when we get an opportunity as African Americans to be proud of some iconic figure in our history, that a building bears his name, we have to fight. And then I'm reminded, Mr. Jester, of the word that I brought last month. Anything worth living for must be worth dying for. And that we have to challenge ourselves. The agenda that we get every month doesn't disturb me as much as the hidden agenda. And there is always a hidden agenda. And I think we all have to ask ourselves, even as we deal with our constituents, what is the real story here? Not what is said, what is not said, and what is implied. I'm sad today that we're in a battle over something much deeper than we want to admit, but most, most of us know what it is. But I'm going to stand for what is right, what is just, and what is pleasing, not just to you, not just to mankind, but to a higher authority, first and foremost.
Thank you, Mrs. Turner. Our last speaker, Dr. Irwin.
I'm on. Oh, I kind of, well, not kind, I do agree with Ms. Turner that I'm very sad. As African American, I'm very insulted, Mr. Jester. Really insulted. But just your comment, and it's not the first time you've made comments like this, probably won't be the last time, but your comment of, would Brookhaven have chosen this name if they had the ability to choose this name? That is a direct slap in the face of the history of African Americans and the presence of African Americans in this country. And I can't believe you had the audacity to even let that come out of your mouth. But it has, and we'll go forward from there. But I'm not gonna put this blame just on you. I'm also gonna, also gonna lay blame on Mr. Orson. Because, Mr. Orson, you have put this board in this position to have to go through this discussion, because I don't think the communication was there. You did call board members, but you did call them last week. And from Mr. Jester's point, you guys have been talking about this for weeks now. So, we're having to defend you, along with Honorable John Lewis. And I don't see that the board should be doing that, because you didn't follow certain protocol, as Mr. Jester has brought up. And I'm just sad that the board has to go through this. But I know you wanna speak. I know Mr. Jester probably wants to speak to that, too. But this is just ridiculous that we're sitting here having to go through this.
I think that I did want to. I called everybody. I called everybody. It was, I mean, I've been calling for two, so it wasn't the last.
When, when did you talk to me?
I called most of the board members three weeks ago.
Myself.
So, and then, I reached out to everybody. I didn't reach everybody. I tried, I mean, before I left on June 23rd. So, it's been weeks since I reached out to everybody. So, I, you know, I share your sadness in how we've gone here. But I was also very clear in all those conversations, quite frankly, I didn't wanna get to this place, that to me, that I was carrying a message from this committee, which I simply chaired. This was not my idea. I didn't generate the idea. This came from the community, from the people who were surveyed in the school community and then pushed, and primarily by the parents who are on that committee. You know, I'm simply the messenger here. But I also understood that the ask was somewhat different than we've done in terms of the portability of the name, which is why I felt it was particularly incumbent to reach out to every board member. So, with all due respect, but I, I'm, it's unfortunate we find ourselves in this conversation. But to the best of my ability, based on what we were operating in, I tried to bring everybody to the table to get their view on this particular issue, because it had this particular wrinkle, you know? And if out of this, we learn more about each other, quite frankly, and we learn about the things that are just below the surface, that we still have to deal with as a community, you know, I tend to think that Congressman Lewis would probably think it was worthwhile to get us there.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're speaking for Congressman Lewis, but I wanna go back to the point. Why do these two board members feel like they were not in a process of picking a name of schools that were gonna impact their district? That's the point that I'm making, because that, that's really the debate between us right now.
Again, to respond to this again, we were creating a unique set of situations, right? So, if it's not in my district, it's one of these two districts. I called everybody, right? Everybody had a chance to raise that objection before we got here to this point of putting it on the agenda, right? So, I can't speak for either of them, but it's not as if I didn't raise the issue that the name was gonna travel with the school. So, if in hindsight, in, under second consideration for either of my board members, that they have a different perspective based on whatever information, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna take, I can't take really responsibility for that. I did the best I can to ferret out how people felt about the notion that we were gonna do, that this was going to travel with them. And so, you know, I'm sorry, people get new information, they rethink it, I don't know. I'm not gonna try to guess for either of my colleagues or anybody else on this board. But we were, in fact, because as a committee, if that wasn't acceptable, we had an alternative, right? So, we, we had a majority consensus on the name, and we had a Plan B if what I described was not accepted. So, given that we didn't get objections to what I was describing, we didn't offer up the second Plan B name. I, I, quite frankly, I don't know what else we could've actually done under those circumstances.
At this time, as I stated, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, my only objection to this was the lack of local control and breaking rules and regulations. So, keep your mic on. So, I gotta tell you, I'm disappointed and to some extent offended that when I asked the question, "Do you believe this is the name that Brookhaven community would choose for their elementary school?" If John Lewis is so great, I think we would all say, yes, that is the name. But all of a sudden, everybody starts bringing race into this, black and white. I didn't do that, y'all did that. Why are y'all always bringing race into this? Ms. Turner, y'all are always bringing ra, it's not about race, it's about local control. That's all it's about. And all of a sudden, everything is race. I'm offended.
All right, let's take a vote.
The school will be named Obama because it's in a black neighborhood, so let's be real about that.
Dr. Morley.
And if your neighborhood, no.
It's always black and white with you.
Dr. Morley and Mr. Jester, I'm gonna ask Margaret if she would read the-
Bring Brookhaven into this century.
The amendment that you- that you made.
Shame to yourselves.
Read it so we'll know exactly what we're voting on, Margaret, if you will, and we will be voting to approve the amendment made by Mr. Jester.
It is requested that the Board of Education waive the five-year waiting period and approve the naming of a temporary school to relieve overcrowding in the Cross Keys Cluster as John Robert Lewis Elementary in honor of Georgia's 5th Congressional District's Congressman John Lewis. The school will be temporarily located at 2383 North Druid Hills Road, Northeast Atlanta That's where he wants to stop it, to remove the...
Now, that was the amendment he made. That's not the original motion that we will be voting on. That's only the amendment.
Right, I did. I didn't read it.
What you're voting on is to amend the original motion statement to strike the last two sentences. And then, once you vote on the amendment, then you vote on the underlying motion. Do you want to change the motion that you considered in the work session?
All right, the first thing we're voting on, whether we want to change the motion to address Mr. Jester's motion.
Right. You are voting right now whether you want to change the motion to name the school John R. Lewis Elementary School only while it remains International Student, at the International Student Center. You're voting on that amendment.
Okay. All right. So at this time, I call for the vote. Okay, failed. Who is that?
Two to five.
Two to five. Okay, now, now we go to the original motion, and will you read the original motion so we'll know exactly what we're voting on?
It is requested that the Board of Education waive the five-year waiting period and approve the naming of a temporary school to relieve overcrowding in the Cross Keys Cluster as John Robert Lewis Elementary School in honor of Georgia's 5th Congressional District's Congressman John Lewis. The school will be temporarily located at 2383 North Druid Hills Road, Northeast Atlanta 30329 until the construction of a new replacement elementary school has been constructed in the Cross Keys Cluster. The name will move with the school to the permanent location.
At this time, I call for the vote. It passes six to one.